Came into place after Bridgepoint was approved by this planning board. It's still the case that Bridgepoint requires a number of approvals. They, there still isn't an approval from DEP on the wetlands permit. There is no approval from the county. The stormwater management permit from DEP is, as you know, under active litigation in the appellate division. The watershed institute is litigant in that case, and that is pending. And so that being the case, my question is, will the inland flood protection rules which require the use of updated flood man?
Francis, you want to come in?
Good evening, Francis Kuzick, township engineer. Hello, Theresa. It's still grandfathered in the town's jurisdiction.
Okay, so I have a comment and I'm happy to follow up with you. I, as an interested, uh, what to call them?
Online training type of thing.
Yeah, right.
We're both on that one.
Exactly.
By seventeen, everything that came in, applications to the township before then, that those are the rules. It's not after that.
So, so my understanding from Vincent Nazai, who, who wrote the rules is that, um, for it's a, it's would be determined on a case by case basis.
It's pending anywhere.
It, it's pending the needed approvals though from DEP and the county. I think it was a very ill conceived process, given the fact that the watershed institute filed an action in the appellate division challenging the stormwater management plan issued by DEP. Is our beautiful township thinking about being the host to a fourth set of gas pumps in our community. Plainsboro has none. Princeton, I believe, has one. Why are we going to be the host to another gas station? And also a convenience store that would be feet away from McCaffrey's.
Anybody else in the public wish to speak, please step up.
For this year, for the remaining one who engages services of Burgess Associates, this board has a jurisdiction to increase, uh, transfer the funds in order for us to finish.
No. Seeing or hearing none to approve the resolution. Backing by, backing by Sue. Please pull the ropes.
Brate?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hooverman?
Yes.
Chairman Carr?
Yeah. Congratulations, ladies. Okay, next up, application.
If I may, um, you know, in my opinion, the notice was proper and the board has jurisdiction.
December seventh, twenty twenty-three letter.
Right.
I was actually just saying, and I copied you on, I raised objections to.
Okay, there's applicants here and Linda, I got the next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to the members of the board. I'm Henry Kent Smith. I'm with the firm of Foxwell Child, and I'm here tonight to represent ERUDC West Windsor LLC on the application that we have before this board. This application involves three tiers of relief, if you will. The first being, we are proposing a minor consolidate the existing lots on the property, which are currently occupied by a variety of vacant, either residential, I think there's one office, old office building there. That's a preliminary major subdivision. We are also then requesting preliminary and final site plan for the proposed restaurant as we do not yet have identified the final tenant. And therefore what we're doing tonight is just setting the parameters. One, it is a permitted use and we are not requesting any bulk variances, although in my notice I do state that we are requesting both variances from signage. Mr. Moore's letter of December seventh said that is not the correct standard. It should be a design exception. Regardless, we're going to present proofs under both steps, under variance and design waiver, design exception for the signage variances. I just, I'm a belt and suspenders kind of guy, so we'll make sure we cover all bases with this board for all. I have submitted to Mr. Mueller, um, a memorandum in response to Mr. Moore's, uh, December seventh letter, establishing what I believe is the board's jurisdiction and disagreeing with Mr. Moore's legal analysis as to, uh, the relief requirements. So the application is described, uh, by the chairman and as notice is for a proposed quick check. It's for the fifty-two square feet. We're all stopping right at the corner of Princeton Heights Town Road and Southfield Road and is bordered south by McGee. So lot two point oh one has actually three street frontages, uh, which is critical to the presentation that we're going to make for tonight and the relief that we're requesting. The second lot, two point oh two, will be proposed for a restaurant, which currently is four thousand five hundred and forty-one square feet and is designed to accommodate, uh, a drive-through service. Uh, and again, as stated, so that we're all clear, we're seeking preliminary and final major subdivision. We're seeking preliminary and final site plan as to the quick check on two point oh one and preliminary only site plan approval for the restaurant pad. So the intent of this development is to develop this property effectively as a property to function somewhat as the singularity. And that will be conditioned and discussed during the course of presentation.
Wherein everybody, yeah.
Quick check operation.
Okay, two, two things.
So, uh, we also have Matthew Kunsman, who's a professional engineer from Bowler Engineering. He is the engineer of record and will describe in detail these site plans and subdivisions that is before the board tonight. Oliver Young is project architect for Quick Check. And since we do have a final design architect for Quick Check, then he will need to be application. So with that, Mr. Muller, then I would.
Yeah, yeah, if you could raise your right hand. You swear or affirm a testimony about to give me the truth. So it's one or from, why don't we start over here and go through, um, give your full name, spell your last name.
That's Matthew Kunsman, K U N S M A N.
Thank you.
Hudsonson, H U T C H I M S O N.
Thank you.
So then, Mr. Chairman, if, if.
Proceeds, I would call Mr. Swirney. Is that just the typo? Is that, uh?
The description. State manager with Quick Check. Um, I've been employing, excuse me, Quick Check just under two years. Um, and I have been a real estate developer, um, on behalf of retailers, developers, and also tenants, uh, since nineteen ninety-eight.
And in that role, then are you responsible for the, um, oversight of the operations? And, uh, you have the knowledge and capability to describe before how Quick Check is operating and the post-operating facility?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so I guess the first question is, what is subtracting Quick Check?
This is of the West Windsor Township.
And what is it about this particular piece of property? And with regard to the existing uses and buildings on that, once this four grants is approved, if it does so, structure will be taken down.
That is cool. Under the drilling family, fuel service is part of the convenience store. Yes, it does. It provides a more efficient operation, also again, convenience for our customers. Particular location where it can provide a, an eight MPD location, multi-product dispenser, two of those being diesel. Diesel is provided at this location as low-flow diesel. It is not intended diesel on the road vehicles. So our intent by any means is to not attract tractor-trailers or use, uh, for fueling on our sites.
And with regard to the hundred plus fueling locations that you have, have you ever encountered issues with, uh, crack trailers and use of the local?
Day, seven days a week, uh, because owners, we'd like to be able to provide them the hours. Also, the off-hours provides us the opportunity so we can better search customers during the busy day hours.
Um, and does it also provide an opportunity for, uh, example, police or emergency services to be able to either fuel and or find a respite during the opening?
That is correct.
Um, and with regard to employees, um, just describe our, where are you looking to, uh, raise your employee count?
Sure. To my page here, like, can I hand for a minute? Uh, total employees for this location, we're proposing anywhere from thirty-five to fifty employees. Uh, we will bring in thirty to forty new jobs in West Windsor. We do operate twenty-four hours a day. During the day, uh, employees on site, anywhere from eight to ten employees inside the store. Overnight, we have a man also provide a safe environment.
Um, speaking of safety and security things, what kind of operation and security do you provide for that?
System that virtually covers every inch of our common area parking lot as well as our interior building.
And what does that do?
Uh, provides us with the ability to monitor what's going on. Also, prior to opening, we like to meet with local municipality police to discuss what measures can be put in place and how we can work together.
And then in that regard, the police then are aware of your security measures.
Provide the video footage that we.
Now, um, in terms of your operational property, can you, let's discuss the, the delivery of product. Let's first talk about the, uh, delivery of fuel service.
Okay.
How often does that occur?
Delivery of our fuel service is, um, six to eight times a week, typically once a day. Uh, our fuel is delivered onsite very, in a very specific designated fuel system. And what that does is ensures us a constant supply of fuel and aid to provide to our customers. Deliveries come on an odd needed basis, um, just so that ensures that we are up. Uh, while the fuel trucks are unloading into the underground storage tanks.
And be stored. Describe that delivery.
Store deliveries, we also have a dedicated store, which is on the side. It's going to be shown later in our site plan. This is for delivery of our stormer. We keep this separate and it's on, located on the side of this building, so it stays away from our main traffic aisles and also our pedestrian foot traffic.
Now, you also receive product from smaller trucks.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. We receive, uh, daily, what I'll call daily, smaller box trucks deliveries. Bread deliveries, free to lay deliveries occur, uh, five days a week, uh, day. And then again, as I mentioned, they are required on the property. We contract with a private contractor for our trash and recycling.
So describe how that allows you to, you know, control time.
We, we contract with national vendors for our, not only our garbage, but our deliveries. We can, as shown on this plan, we're going to provide four exterior tables sections. They can stop either inside or outside, enjoy their food, their snack, their drink, whatever is an idling in the park.
Um, let's briefly just talk about the box service.
Yeah, Quick Check, we have some of the items that we offer is fresh brewed coffee, um, handcrafted specialty drinks, made to order sandwiches. We offer baked goods that are made fresh onsite every day. We have a hot soups bar. We have salads and produce available for those who want to choose some healthier options. A small array of grocery items. Uh, we have a very large selection of fountain drinks, shakes, and also frozen drinks. We offer a free ATM and lottery service inside of our store. And again, for those items, as we discussed earlier, we see the options.
Now, signage, is that important to Quick Check?
Sign is very important to Quick Check.
So we are requesting a variety of twenty, what is the, what makes it so important for the check?
It's important for Quick Check as a sinus is identification is who we are and actually where we are, being the way the site is oriented. Um, and we front on three separate streets. We'd like to be safe man and get in and out of our site quickly and safe.
Is fuel pricing required by statute?
Yes, it is.
And so therefore you don't really have a choice.
Correct.
Um, the architect will describe, just in terms of your Quick Check identification, who you are. Does Quick Check just do cheap buildings or high-quality construction?
I can assure you that, uh, we use very high-quality building materials, um, in looking at our buildings. We are attending here on this location to use lots of brick, uh, which is a natural, timely, um, product. That is included in our building, um, as well as our canopy. What we do, um, with that is we feel that it provides a clean and bright appearance.
They so chose to provide solar?
We do that right now is providing solar, great solar in the future.
And what the, uh, uh.
Um, is adequate to serve our customers with the dual entrances. Um, and again, we're, we're selling convenience, um, and we're selling speed of service. So we like to provide parking so our customers can get in and out safely and quickly at the two entrances that are proposed for this location.
And in terms of the, uh, curve around the building, that's another design set that we're requesting. So the ordinance requires that there be curving around our building, but we are not proposing curving. Rather a flat surface to, uh, around the front of the building. Well, why is Quick Check do that?
This is, we've learned that it reduces the amount of trip hazards coming in and out of the building. Um, a lot of times, obviously, our customers are carrying merchandise. So a flush curb straight out to the parking lot, uh, reduces that, provides a safer environment. It also allows us, uh, as long as maintaining the property.
Can tractor-trailers navigate through the lanes of the pumps?
Tractor-trailers for fueling or our delivery tractor-trails?
Tractor-trailer coming down five seventy-one, fifty-three footer. You can't, can it navigate through your site and pull up to a pump and get, yeah.
I will leave that question for our engineer.
Yeah, he will. Our engineer, uh, sort of, like, you.
Okay.
Is it possible that some of your, your stores, um, don't allow trucks? Or at least trucks of a certain size, like sixteen-wheelers, eighteen-wheelers? Um, could be consideration on a, or a weight limit or the length of the trucks or something like that? Cause we're not, um, very excited about having big, big trucks, you know, driving in and out of there.
We do not promote our fuel, um, for larger semi-size trucks.
And, um, Mr. You guys, I will, uh, represent, I've represented Quick Check for a long time. Uh, we have, we need to agree to permanent signage, uh, relative to, uh, you don't get your diesel fuel here if you are over X length. Uh, and that signage is usually promptly posted within the store as well as at the fuel pump. So it's very clear that tractor-trailer is not going to be fueling in the.
Well, I want to make sure, I mean, if you go on record, that, that's not going to happen. So we, we need to.
I'd like to follow up on Linda's concern that this, uh, and I'd like Sam two seventy-one, is that correct? I don't, I do not think that the Valero, the, the, the Vero, the Shell Station, the seven eleven offered diesel. Am I correct? Hang up on Linda, I want to express the concern that according to the transportation, big trucks map, that in that.
We would be more than willing for the township to sign and, uh, Mr. Hudson, uh, the employees are directed not fueling.
With every new Quick Check that's coming down the line, as well as those in the last couple of years, do they all offer diesel? Is that part of your model? Yes, it is. That is part of our model. Okay.
But if we didn't want diesel, we could talk about that.
Good question regarding the diesel. It's, it's not, it's that it's low, it's that it's low flow and it's not the quality of the diesel fuel. It's that it's low flow that they wouldn't want.
It is not the quality of the fuel, it's the rate of flow from.
It would take them to fill up.
That's correct.
Engineer should probably address the ability for a tractor-trail actually to pull in to the bumps given the narrow distances.
Yeah, Mr. Hudson, I need to be both.
Since you brought, brought up the, uh, snow removal with your, um, doing snow removal on your property.
We will contract with a snow removal company for snow removal onsite. And there are certain parameters in which they are required to come out. On a certain amount of snowfall or when temperatures drop below a certain amount, they will come out and solve the parking lot. So we can ensure a safe environment for our customers.
The business of a lot of snowfall, you can bring one home and snow off-site.
If it needs to be hauled off-site, if it's impacting our parking stalls, yes, we will. Uh, a question for Sam, does he need a sworn in?
Yeah.
Oh, swear him all.
If you can raise your question. Swear or affirm a testimony about to give me the truth.
I do.
So sworn in from just stating full name for the record, you're true.
Sam Sir, East Town, Land Use, Management, and Zonings.
David Novak of Burgess Associates, playing on song.
Francis Kuzick, Patrick, engineer.
For you, Sam, is, um, twenty-four seven, uh, gas, uh, facilities.
My recollection, there's, there is no limitation on the hours of operation for any fueling station and ordinance specifically. We've limits the hours of operation for the proposed Quick Check that's going in there.
So in terms of ordinance for this type of use.
Other, there were no restrictions with the Wawa that the zoning board.
Right, right. That's why I was wondering if there was.
Their choice.
And I'm, I'm guessing the seven eleven is a twenty.
I'm, I'm not familiar with the hours of operation of each of the gas stations. I do know there is no ordinance other than in the Pennsneck development area that would restrict their hours of operation, other than that.
Talk about gas station and diesel and this, but, uh, if not, if Murphy gets away, there won't be any gas cars only in Delaware. And you can see it very backward. Uh, if you go to Pennsylvania or Delaware, every Wawa has ten gas stations and eight, um, Tesla, quick checks. When I see that seats, I see that Wawa, almost every other seat, every other Wawa, well, it's kind of, you just, you have.
Um, and at this particular location, we have, um, a certain amount of spots for what we call make-ready EV.
As well as we, I think, are having two or three that will actually be installed.
Yes.
Hudson will describe that in a little greater detail, but yes, we are. Um, if I could, this was one, man, I can't go, I brought up a follow-up. You have emergency generator capacity in the building that in the event there was a major snowstorm and the power goes out, that you would be able to get a, uh, generator to this facility?
Actually, on the site plan, which will, we review, we will be installing an emergency generator, um, along with our building. Um, and again, so we can remain open, um, in the event of a power outage. That emergency generator, um, is under contract for regular routine maintenance, so it's up and ready to go, um, at any time. We also install transfer switches, um, on the exterior of our building. In the event we would need to bring in a, a portable generator.
Standby generator?
Excuse me?
Is that a standby generator or a portable generator that you bring, that you have?
We will be installing a, a permanent generator.
Well, standby, so power goes out, the standby generator kicks in and.
Allows us to continue operation in a power outage.
We'd like some, will we get testimony on the weekly testing of that generator? Like when, what hours it's going to operate for, how long?
It's, the, the answer is.
Based on the manufacturer requirements.
Be tested during daylight hours.
Correct, correct.
Nine to five type hour.
Right, it is a natural gas generator.
But you don't have that, you don't have that, that data or information tonight?
Oh, no, it will be generated, they always time generate run that pot.
The time, the times you're going to run it or?
The testing would be during the normal business.
And, and you'll have the, um, sound output, uh, of, of what that generator generated distance or, uh, hearing that sound?
So generators are stuck with a bomb flying at a data center for example.
Not to object, but Mr. Kent Smith is testifying, he can't, and if he has an expert, he would be able to answer Mr. Carr's question. That would be more appropriate.
Yeah, I think the objection, I think the objection is well taken. The objection is well taken.
So, Ms. Hudson, are you able to answer the questions asked by chairman?
I do not have a specific, specific information on the generator.
Those questions.
We will provide the board with that, to an independent expert. We do not have any data.
Okay, so then, you know, on approval, that may be a condition of, we'd like to know what the, um, acceptable noise level, whether it meets the town's ordinance prior to, um, you know, you know, the conditional criteria approval, absolute noise.
We do, I think. For everything that deals with it.
We do have town, we do have, um, a town noise ordinance, I think during emergency situations, out the window. So they only apply during testing times. If there's an emergency.
Required noise, uh, testing level. I don't think the generator is going to be as large as that one. Also, the, that one is close to residential, which one may not be as close as, as the Verizon generator and definitely not as large for sure. So, but it's something that we need to consider and make sure that we have the, you know, proper testimony and, um, and, uh, and data surrounding that.
I was just going to say that, that my own experience, the, uh, the generators normally test once a week, fifteen minutes at a point at a time, they're extremely loud when they're running. So it is important to get that data at the, at the property lot, anybody, but I think we need the, the proof.
I have a generator, it runs once a week for twelve minutes.
We will provide that, that information.
Okay, that is Jerry. Yeah, what I, what we do is that is to ask the question. A lot of times, the questions that the public may have are answered during testimony.
Henry, you'll, you'll qualify?
Yes.
And, and.
Q, M A T T H E W. My last name is Kunsman, K U N S M A N.
So, Mr. Kuns, he's so kind and proud with your professional credentials, licenses, education, and your experience in the area of site plan design.
Sure, I have a bachelor's in science and civil engineering from Syracuse University. I'm a project manager, project manager at Bowler Engineering. I've been doing site design for eight plus years. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is good standing. And I've been accepted as an expert witness in front of various planes, zoning boards in the state of New Jersey.
Um, and, uh, again, everything is current relative to your licenses?
Yes, it is.
Well, I am committing, uh, report, report tonight.
Uh, yes, I am. Sure, I want to mark this exhibit, A, A two. Do I just write it on the top right corner? Okay. So this is, uh, in yellow in the center of the page. Okay. Is that okay? We. Okay.
Very good. The proceedings.
Yeah, so the, the property is known as three thirty-two through three forty, Heights Town Road and Princeton Heights Town Road and Southfield Road. It's a regular shaped lot with a total lot area of the five lots of three point nine zero four acres. Also, we'll see in the center of the pages, our proposed subdivision, it's in green. It might be also the restaurant lot, which is the western side of the property, lot two point zero two.
So, Kunsman, let me hold you up for a second. And, and ask the board and the, the members of the public, would it work better if that was actually pulled up? We've gone through this, this drill many, many times.
Okay. Whatever.
Well, not, not that all against. Do you have any, do you have any handouts?
Sure.
That makes sense. So how about, give us the handouts and place the board, uh, kind of towards the public?
Good, Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you, Henry.
Think check. So there's nothing, if you would, referring into A two of this walk.
Um, to the northeast is. Yes, I do not have a handout of this one.
That, uh, you will mark.
And then it shows overgrown vegetation and, um. That's correct. I consist of really, uh, two areas. It's our, uh, property I described before, and also the total dental care in addition to the Valero gas station. So that's the B two A zone. That's a buffer, uh, between our property and our thirty zone, the transition to my next exhibit. Sure, this is a colorized rendering of the site plan that we submitted as part of our application. And for lot two point zero two, so the township along each frontage as well.
Well, I'm sorry, can you, can you call off those numbers again?
Sure. Side of the building that customers will access. There's also a door for loading zone as well on the western facade. So there's canopy is five thousand eight hundred and ninety nine square feet, consists of eight uh dispensers with addition of two um diesel pumps. So in total, there are sixteen fueling positions. So uh the dis, the diesel dispenser is right next to a regular pump, so two cars can't be uh filling at the same position. So there's only sixteen fueling positions, even though there's ten dispensers. They're at the corners of uh the northern side of the canopy, so there's one um in the northeast corner and one in the northwest corner of the canopy. Uh additionally, we're proposing four twenty thousand gallon underground storage tanks uh to store uh the um low flow diesel pumps. They provide uh they dispense um six to nine gallons per minute versus a high flow sniffing just uh difference between the two. All right, and then each side dispenser five, so about four times greater speed. But we are proposing a four thousand. With all this, uh we are compliant with the bulk uh standards uh for uh lot area.
Sam, another question for you on this matter. Very long queues, I would say that for drive through.
Quite a longer queuing that is going to be better on the site for that use.
So with it, so even though uh we're dealing with the level of information we have tonight, they are, they will come back in phase.
Tenant requires any type of substantial modifications to building.
Own standards, whether it be the terms and conditions of the preliminary.
Uh, again, uh I I just made the representation on the record relative to the requirement that when we find a specific tenant user, there will be a need to come back to this board.
I've not even touched the topic of signage yet, but I am very reticent to approve uh a a third monument sign with the waiver that the applicant is requesting being presented, you know, stop the restaurant use, yet we're not I I I'm confused about what level of approval we're doing tonight or in review of the restaurant use. I mean, we're talking about quick check entirely. I get that.
Right.
But this, the restaurant part of the site is part of the application.
Correct.
And you're asking for site plan types of approvals.
Correct.
Signage is part of that. So I again.
Position, um this matter will be carried. I'm certain Mr. Moore is going to have his say at the next.
Or maybe it's just me. I don't know what the resident colleagues think.
Amendmented primary, right?
If the new you.
For the board to get an amended final site.
If the tenant is going to require more queuing that was approved than the preliminary, yes, it would. But remember, the final still has to go through TRC, so staff would, and we can make the determination whether it's an amended preliminary in addition to the final.
Exactly, that's where I started, Michael. Yeah, yeah.
We get to a point where we, there's, there's no place for.
Pastor Carp, I could assure you, it won't go past TRC if they can't fit the number of parking.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Other than what I've reserved relative to just belts and.
Two driveways, right in, right out on Princeton. Um, we are also proposing uh point nine feet separating the two driveways.
And just describe why that is, while we're on that topic.
Yes, as I was mentioning before, we position these driveways as far from the intersection as possible um to provide more room for cars be able to pull out and not impact it or provide less impact to the the signal.
Matthew, further down uh Southfield Road.
Oh, we don't.
Racks somewhere.
Yeah, you may have some employees that want bike racks too.
Exactly.
They might, they might want to charge their e-bike.
Oh, I I apologize. We already do have bike racks proposed. There are uh four bike racks located at uh northeast corner of the um the convenience store.
So, Mr. Kuntz, in terms of the driveways, the uh accesses are right in, right out, is that correct, on Princeton Heitstown Road? It's in Heitstown Road?
That is correct. You cannot make a left into the site from Princeton Heitstown and right out driveway. I propose.
And.
I'm sorry.
What's the speed limit there? Could you?
Oh.
Testify to that?
Uh, I believe it's a forty five.
Saw no speed limit sign on McGettrick.
And not make a convenient experience for the customers.
Um, and in terms of just, if you could just walk through the rest of the access with the cross access, so the benefit is the just to.
We have three frontages. It provides a convenient experience for the customer. It's also uh fully designed for um tractor trailers, W fifties for deliveries of fuel and for the store as well to circulate the site. It'd be signed that way in current condition, but. Field Road. We are realigning uh that roadway as well.
Impact the the tunnel. Uh, hey, it's configured. You cannot make the left out the way the striping is.
We have proposed signage um from McGettrick Lane along our, our longer site frontage to make the right turn into the site, Dr. Tuttle's office. Um, and you can travel still southeast um from the intercept and to Southfield Road in that direction as well. That's correct.
So what they have currently will be taken away from them in a sense.
Yes.
Not in a sense in reality.
Lane will be aligned. It's a two way of dental office will be a one way southbound.
Yes.
And the dental office will still have a left turn coming out of the dental office, turning left and it going south on McGettrick. There will be a lot.
Well, that's not the way this is showing, though.
Yeah, because that's.
The double stripe there with the.
Nation here.
Okay.
The taper that they're showing over here near the uh dental office is too soon. It has to tapers.
They will not permit a left turn on their road.
That's fine. They would be able to make that.
Honey, it's been, they're well aware.
McGettrick, okay? Um, after I make the turn on McGettrick, how do I know that the, it will only serve the tunnel property and tonight's property? How will, how do I, how do you?
Very small.
Right, but in with this application, it's a local, but now we're making it two way. But from Southfield Road coming east, it's only serving the two properties. How is a driver, is it communicated that it only serves those properties?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So our traffic engineer will talk about that, but also I want, I want you to to is that this issue also has the authority then to say, we want this sign, we want that sign, because you're.
Got it, Henry. So, thank you. That would help, but it's not on the application.
And and I I believe they're providing a proper sign. It's one way.
You, one, one way, but no through street. I mean, it's, 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 it's not, it's saying one way directional, but it's not communicating to the driver that this road only will let you make right turns into getting lost and cutting through the tunnel property to get back to Highway five seventy one. Because the other directional information, we'll get there. Thank you.
Driveway opening size where for a two way driveway, twenty feet for uh the driveway for the quick check. That is allow for uh tractor trailers to deliver WB fifty trucks to deliver to the stores as well as for a fire truck to be able to make the maneuver onto the site.
Now, how about the internal circulation? Could you just walk through in terms of the uh drive aisles and in particular, let's focus on the canopy and circulation in in front of the quick check?
Sure, we also provide thirty seven foot drive aisles uh between uh, I guess, the east side of the canopy and the west side of the canopy as well. Circulating around the building, we do have twenty five foot drive aisles um around the the quick check building and also around the restaurant building. For the uh drive through uh quick check in the rear of the building, so on the western facade of the building. Um, that is fifteen feet wide. That is adequate space for a WB fifty truck or a box truck uh to deliver to the store. And we also have a fueling zone and and that is because uh you're not permitted to have.
Any other practical alternative?
Uh, no, there's not.
How tall is your uh canopy proposed?
Uh, the clearance is fourteen and a half feet, which is adequate distance for a truck to circulate underneath if it needed to. As well. And with that requirement, uh the state statute, you get credit for the number of parking spaces where it doubles. Uh, it counts the EV parking spaces requirement where a maximum of forty two parking spaces is permitted for the quick check. Again, we have fifty two physical parking spaces on the site.
Uh, and then from a design perspective, is that then uh an appropriate amount of parking from?
I have a question about the parking spaces. How did you?
Convenient, but fifty two parking spaces is uh pretty typical for um many of their locations. Yards, it's not very practical then. As I was mentioning, it it is.
In the number of parking spaces.
That.
And habit of the uh.
The restaurant as well. Um, for this one, we are requesting a waiver for the number of parking spaces. Uh, scenario, we have seven or forty five physical parking spaces where forty five spaces is the maximum allowed. However.
Lane, how the water uh penetrates into the ground with the floor is paved.
Per the requirement, but there's forty five physical parking spaces.
Um, and uh just going back, uh you uh if you would, to the uh.
With all uh state statutes, Bureau of Underground Storage Tanks as well. Um, and we're proposing a way from as far from all the parking spaces as possible. That way uh pedestrians or customers of the store uh limits their interaction with the fueling truck.
Um, if you then, let's just go through how the utilities are being provided into the property for water, sewer, et cetera.
Lane um into the sewer main. We are also proposing connection for public water as well for each build.
Your plan and how you achieve compliance.
Our major development as defined by the NJDEP. Um, our plan has been reviewed and accepted by the county. Uh, they have no stormwater comments that we have approval from this board as well. So for stormwater management, we are proposing um green energy and as well as um porous pavement provide throughout the site.
Geotechnical qualities that uh support your design?
Yes, we have. So we do have test pits uh located throughout the site uh which define the seasonal high water table and.
Is otherwise uh uh those types of uh uh filtration devices.
Yes, we do also provide um a manufactured treatment device above ground basins.
Um, and as the engineer record, you would be providing a proposed operation and maintenance manual for all stormwater facilities as required by uh the township?
Yes, uh application.
Well, why don't we just do?
That areas that doesn't get.
I believe exceeds what's required by the state and they vacuum truck um all.
All right, thank you.
Wall mounted lights, canopy lights as well. Uh, we do have a waiver for the maximum at all engineers or refer to for safe lighting levels. Lighting level.
And is there something unique about?
Foot wide uh concrete sidewalk, which is a multi-use path, which the county required as well. So we um, the recommended minimum, you want a higher lighting level to provide safety.
If you then protect the any, any uh protect.
Maybe our recess.
Um, and with guard then to lighting levels in and around the convenience store itself, is there a design reason enhanced lighting in that area?
Um, across from um the entrances of the gas or the convenience store, um we have crosswalks throughout the site as well, so pedestrian safety.
Um, and um, and with regard then to the um uh lighting then projecting.
I S one is um um that traverses outbound along our frontage and Princeton Heitstown Road, that multi-use path along our frontage.
Union with regard to the overall lighting as requested is uh part of this application in conjunction with what the ordinance standards are.
That this uh lane package does uh meet the IES standards and provides a safe lane level.
Think that West Windsor's lighting standards do not uh match IES standards?
Yes. The the average and quite significantly because you have brighter lights underneath the the gas canopy.
Um, one thing that we uh want to make sure we touch base on relative to the circulation, the circulation of uh the waste disposal trucks and their ability to access.
So five, um, two different stop at lights. One, this is the uh Cooper, Cooper lighting light where you wouldn't have any.
Are dark sky compliant.
But what are these side panels?
Uh, that's where the LED um housing is.
So, so you're basically saying that I mean, the depiction of the, of the, of the fixture.
Sure.
Looks like it would be plastic on the sides. So you're saying that that is.
Oh, the plastic on the sides, that is just a frame. It's not.
It's just a print, me reading this.
And I understand.
Totally different. Thank you.
Before we get to the the landscaping, I do want you to point out the.
The egress side of the driveway for Princeton Heitstown Road, Prince.
And then uh with regard to uh onsite signage, um if you could just uh um and the architect will review the facade signage, but just note the uh waivers requested for the facade sign.
Excuse me, Henry, you're going through this really quickly. Number one, you don't even have a display shown, and I don't think.
Do you?
Sure, so this is exhibit, starting from the, I guess, top left portion of the page, we have the two uh different ages as well. And then additionally, along the bottom of the page, we have.
Sinage size, dimensions, height, all of that for each one of the signs, and then in terms of the signs that are adjacent to this area the same, please.
Okay, so the way the township nine feet, two inches wide, eleven feet tall, that's how big the.
We will address between now and will be requesting because I, my gut tells me that we won't be.
Four, three uh per the detail. So it has a three foot base for that sign.
Now, if you would just.
That's the notify um.
And that area, what's that size?
Uh, sixteen inches.
Okay, um, and I believe that is also a design waiver, is it not? The size of the lettering? That size.
I don't, I don't believe that there is a height and a seven foot eight inch.
Do that correctly at that.
Correct.
Okay, and therefore, regardless of who it is or where it is, the height relative to this type of sign in this location with the requirement.
It's about seven and a half inches.
You're not, most customer, or most customers, as uh Mr. Dean, the traffic consultant, will testify to, are uh going to the uh to the site because it's on their way to something. They're not going out of their way for that. So providing larger signs.
Site, or is that how it is in other?
Or uh similar size signs on different quick check locations, but yes, it does depend on the site.
Can you uh tell me how many square feet are on that price of their um product? I don't understand.
So for this sign, the hundred square foot sign, um you're not allowed to make a left turn on from um Princeton Heitstown Road into the site, so we want to be able to see that sign.
Just covering your brick and possibly covering your diesel price, but at my house, when I have foundation plants.
See that the sign is much higher off the ground. And then if you look at the Valero sign, for instance, there is no foundation planning, so it can be much lower.
McCaffrey's, did you say five acres? I'm not going to be able to read any of it because I'm just going to be blinded by all these signs. Not going to be able to read any of it because they're just going to be blinded by all these signs.
Well, this is something, Mr. Panков and this board are certainly going to need to evaluate, and we are hearing loud and clear the concerns that are being raised. Um, so that this is something that we will take under advisement when we are between hearings and come back with a response if there is one necessary in order to.
A sign, uh, there, Sanoco came through.
Right.
Highway one, Southbound.
Yes.
Um, did we give, did they require sign variations?
Maybe for the applicant here was the attorney for the Sanoco and he might have a.
Oh, Henry, tell us.
Yes. Um, we actually came in with the sign that was somewhat like, uh, in terms of size, we reduced it in response to the requirements. Remember, I, I believe we did think that. Harrison there that there was a legitimate concern. Right. And find out what waivers the zoning board grain of.
One, one thing, I mean, some of us were on the board. I, I wore four meetings. Okay. And, and there was a lot of discussion about the size of the sign. And I believe they had a consultant come in who's a specialist in the size of signs. And it's, it's like, I guess the volume of traffic, the speed of the traffic and all these type of technical things, um, were reviewed by a professional consultant.
Grade, it's not raised on a berm or anything. It's.
I understand somebody coming from Ice Town, going to Prince Town needs to see that sign before the traffic, right? I asked them that there is a gas station there and if you said that you put.
Into the site and how that impacts.
For a gas station, ah, green and yellow, that's my quick check. I'm gonna, you know, I, I got my left coming in, I gotta, you know, I gotta slow down. So the fact that maybe a hundred square feet may be a little too big. Compared to the surrounding side at the other corner. Just, it's still changing, but it's very distinguishable.
Then with regard to.
Square feet on the north facade of the.
So finally landscaping, because I noticed you have A four back up on the stand and that would be a good exhibit use relative to. The, uh, landscaping plan, right?
Yes. So we.
Incorrect.
Absolutely. That's exactly, Mr. Chairman, what Mr. Kunsman is doing. Fact witness relative to what's there, not its quality, quantity, survivability or otherwise.
Yeah. So. What you can see on this plan is a significant amount of landscaping that we are proposing, uh, varying from street trees, shade trees, evergreen trees and so on, shrubs. Uh, we have a total of one thousand along the intersection, um, the, um, twenty-five feet from the property will, uh, buffer.
So one of the issues then, um, that, uh, we will also.
Out, the southern portion of the exhibit.
And the area that is now currently owned by the applicant that will be in, um, and I just want to prize the board, uh, just, uh, um, and finally, did you prepare a, uh, uh, sort of?
Features as well. So what you can.
While we're on. A representation that of a, uh, second building, that would be the proposed restaurant, correct?
Correct. That's in the distance on the right-hand side.
And that is just, you select that as a generic representation?
Yes.
Okay. That's then, and then the proposed monument sign that's depicted on there is accurate to scale?
Yes.
For the quick check. Okay. All right. Um, we will agree to make those modifications. So with that, I have no further direct questions. But there are no. And you are the architect of record in terms of plans being presented to the board tonight. I am offering Mr. Young. Need to mark that separately is the, uh, these are record plans?
No, it's part of the, but the mayor asked if you could hold your mic closer. Mr. Young, what sheet is that?
Uh, it'll.
This footprint feels more, this seating area, you know.
Thank you.
This will now be A seven. And do you have any handouts of that?
Isn't this A six?
A seven. Photo simulation.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
She are. It's not. Colorized version of the building and fuel and elevation. They know that it was presented. Focus on this city here during my test of. I'm going to speak to the. However, a bump out portion of the building. Here along Princeton Heights Town Road, that bump out steps up. So the total height there is twenty-six feet six inches. We all get the same report again. To get moved out here along the center of the building. Still a lead. Now, bring it up a foot and off the top of my head, we approximately three feet and two. That's our mega bear unit, various pump, various, various. The reason I'm stating all that is because there's a lot of equipment on. You can see in the elevations here, none of that. The reason is the power plant here shield is all that.
That's all.
Six.
Okay.
Which will more than, it's more than adequate straight of the hall spoon, which would be one of the.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now in terms of color and materials.
I did look at the one in Monroe.
Older brick, which project does not use anymore and that brick is actually no longer there.
Well, that's a good.
Terms of the facade design break, which you see rapper on all four sides of the building. Now for the most of the sides, the pawning is four feet high and projects outward. However, on the west elevation here, which is actually loading is at the bump out here, it's not. This will be a two different points. Modification to the elevation.
That would be exhibit.
Now we've made two modifications. Second change. I had to deal with the storefront framing and related. You remember if you recall from the previous exhibit, and I'll hold it up very briefly. You can see that the storefront continues all the way to the ground. What we've done, continued the brick all the way across the elevation at the bump out. It's a cleaner look. Plus with the checkout, it's going to bring the exhaust and those are the full and few mic. We should do a can, we'll just pull some of this exhibit. As Mr. Kunsman previously testified to, the minimum height from grades on the other side of the canopy is fourteen foot six inches. And it sells, we're eating on with a light green stripe. Traditionally, the support columns for the canopy, they're same color, same material that creates. I know there's been a lot of discussion about the sign and, you know, but I will, for the record. Stay. Few building signs. We have one on the north facade, the main entrance of the building, Jason Princeton Heights Town Road. We do, um, always sort of pretty good down inside, I screen over forty-six point seven square. Now, I, looking at the signage required in this four West Wind, I will say for the record that for the building signs, we comply with internal, I mean, these are individual channel letters internally. Uh, I believe the, the raceway is not, is supposed to be recessed, will not exist there. It show a clear, however, we can't agree to remove the raceway. And not the channel letters for both lines to the building. Uh, I believe that the cover of the ground right there, that sign itself is twenty-two point plus with that.
So, um, it then, in terms of the size of the facade signs, um, did you go?
Requires fifty square feet?
Yes. Uh, clearly identified, obviously. I'm proposing a sign on the west elevation, whether it's custom loading or we're not proposing a sign in east elevation.
Um, and your architectural opinion is the proposed signage appropriate relative to the massing of the building itself?
Director of the gas canopy, you have an illustration there. Yeah, yeah, uh, yeah. Talk, uh, talk about.
And the columns here, they might be a little bit hard to see there.
My question is, uh, as similar to the illustration I just gave you, can the, uh, can the, uh, cornice be also on the gas canopy as it is?
And Curtis? If you could identify.
Oh, if I, that will make it an exhibit. I don't even, Henry, what's the next number?
No, it's PB one.
A. Oh, it's, it's got a different code.
PB one.
BB one.
PB one.
I'll put it on the back.
All right. PB one. Okay.
It's from, uh, uh, it's from another location of a quick check that has also been done by this architect. The, the illustration's coming around. I'll put BB one on the back. It's the, the cornice at the top.
Oh, okay.
So that is the same effective element, Mr. Young. You show on.
The edge of the building. Thank you.
And then I just, Mr. Chairman, I have one last question then. In terms of the proposed. So is your opinion then that quick check with the proposed, uh, with the existing?
The pumps. Is there any kind of enclosure for that, uh, employee for inclement weather or? There are two of them. That actually two.
Um, I'm sheet, uh, new sheet A four. I just can't pick it up. I'm sorry. Well, I know where they are, but what I'm saying is I can't see the elevation.
Yes, that's. On exhibit eight.
Sorry about the.
Building.
Is that a stock equipment unit?
I believe they're free.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a, I have a question. Is, is that? Is that part of the signage package?
There will be one second. Do you need one of the canopies having to check, uh, logo and signature? No, we're on. Yes, I believe.
Those quick checks.
Cue at the bottom there. Oh, yeah. Quick check two at the top.
So it's not part of the signage?
We did not consider it part of the science because it's not in any, this is something we will take under advisement relative to the issue of signage that we have heard loud and clear from this board tonight.
You know where you are.
At, with a resubmission.
Over the pump.
Oh, you're.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's equipment, it's equipment related.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do we have? Do we continue the tradition?
More interested in the, the one in that top left. Do you have details on the size of that sign?
Yeah, that's the sign is twenty-two point six. Wrong number time, thank you.
Well, following up on the chairman's, uh, comment with regard to the sign, that's a facade sign. Not a facade sign to the building. It's a facade sign on the elephant, on the canopy.
That canopy, I'm sorry.
The canopy sign, the canopy.
Also, I thought we were talking about.
I apologize.
Yeah. That, that's part of the signage count, area count.
Oh, and they require waiver for that. Yes. So one of the waivers they require. Uh, typically this is a canopy, you can read those regulations. They really seem to match up more with a canopy like utilization at a downtown. So. Not necessarily the gas station canopy, but we're.
But the letters are.
Certainly doing best that we can to apply to this.
Yeah.
So that's why there's an eight inch height limitation there, uh, regarding these other regulations regarding.
Twenty-five because of the big Q one.
It can't exceed fifty percent of diagonal portion of the awning or canopy. There is no diagonal portion here. So that would not be something we'd be looking at. Uh, must be located on the vertical aspect of it. It cannot exceed eight inches. Uh, letter and logo area does not exceed fifteen percent of diagonal portion. Again, that's not something that's posted here. And, uh, only allowed on first floor onings and canopies. This is not attached to a building. So, uh, again, it's, uh, not something that we would necessarily write. Now, so in order to, for them to have guidance on any, any canopy sign, you have to basically look at what we've approved in the past. No, 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 I'm sorry. I thought that was, uh, prior question was regarding, uh, the gas station.
Past does not mean it has presidential value for the application before the board. So we can disagree.
So, so again, my question is, in the ordinance, is there any area limitation for the, is there any limitation on the size of a sign? As we do for a for a building. For on a canopy, the area regulation is just the eight inch. Connected to what is called the diagonal portion of the on air canopy. But we don't have the diagonal. Exactly. So then there was a. Alright, so what I'm saying is for this, there is really. Size of the sign. So essentially the guy.
Those are eight inches like, uh, yeah.
I, I think that's.
So one thing, uh, having served on both the planning board and the zoning board, one thing that both boards consistently are concerned about is signage, the character of the signage, the quality of the signage, the size of the signage, West Windsor Township.
Message received.
Not at this time, however, there, we are exploring.
Yes. And in fact, we, we've already agreed that it would be outfit with the conduits so that the, the, the ability to convert to solar would be just put the panels up, one to wire, wire down.
Really quick. Um, it's it's approaching nine thirty. You have one more witness, right?
Yes, for, for tonight. One last.
Which I believe will generate a lot of interest. And, uh, I also want to make sure that the public that's been very patient waiting here has a chance to, to speak at least and address things that they've heard. So I'll ask my college engineer and then.
Smile on his face. I think the answer.
So at this time, I'd like.
In our ability to class.
Um, the applicants will present, uh, a final two things. Now, the public will again have a chance to speak and you'll have a chance to discuss the question. All their experts will be back.
And our professional request.
Of, of course, thank you, and our professionals will speak. And our professionals are really good. They can answer all your questions. Do you not have any questions from the applicants?
And Kevin, at, at that point, Kevin, if you want to put on any of your own.
Fox.
Okay, thank you.
Um, this may sound like kind of all over the place, uh, because there are just notes that I took. So just the opening comment that this is the first quick check in West Windsor and bring it. This is not who we are. We're not fast food. We're not junk. Suggest a deed restriction so that it not be twenty-four hours. That would be a magnet for young people meeting up with who they meet online. There are studies that prove that they are magnets for violent crime. When you have convenience stores and drive-through restaurants, I would deep restrict that as well. I think what we're doing to our local small businesses in that mall is harmful. And I would suggest restricting the drive-through to not establish who really struggles to stay afloat and gives back to the community. Texas, who saw us as a great place to make money to exist, I would suggest that we ask Quick Check to raise the bar and make some kind of merchant agreement with McCaffrey's and Rover's Mill, maybe sell their coffee, sell their baked goods. Um, specialty items from McCaffrey's like their flowers or, um, there's a lot of specialty items they have. Um, as far as the, that, there's no need. We've got lots of gas stations in town. So without an excessive need to be filled, I don't see how this is going to be very prosperous for Quick Check. But I don't think it's fair to offer us the area around, give, don't give them a turning radius, just make it physically impossible for a track. So my kids weren't screaming for me to drive through the drive-through to get them the junk food that I don't want them to eat. And if I have athletes on a field who want to ride their bike.
You swear or affirm in a testimony about to give a bit of truth?
Yes, I do.
So it's wonderful.
My name is Allison Miller, forty-one Windsor Drive. Miller is M I L L E R. When it came up before, um,
He's after everything, but I don't want anybody waiting here.
I, I understand that, but it was mentioned and I just want to put it on the record that we care about native species and prefer them and praise New York because the buildings looked different. They weren't built all at the same time by all the same architects. I think there's too much. I think there's too much similarity, uh, something for, can we do?
We. You swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
So sworn affirm, please state your full name and spell your last name.
That the safety of the residents in the town are is kind of a top of mind issue, especially with unfortunate uh, changes based on some of these ideas. Uh, the traffic study unrevised for March may result in the elimination of infrastructure that's designed for should just be like a right angle. Uh, then it's safer for people that are walking across that intersection. For the proposal to make Magetrick Lane two directions, I think that's obviously to accommodate additional entrances that way. And if we're making improvements to add bike lanes on Magetrick, going and going into that shopping center. At the same time, there is a sidewalk that's proposed on Magetrick as well as, where I noted that you said that there's would be appropriate to have that location. Thank you.
Regarding the, um, the question, the bike lanes, it should be kind of looked at or addressed when the. For what the road would be, you know, the only, so this suggestion it should be looked at. When that is really uh, enough space for it, but it should be definitely just a good idea.
What about the crosswalks?
And the crosswalks, you know, yeah, I think it was a good idea. Okay, anybody else in the public?
To give will be the truth.
Okay, my, my name?
Yes.
You say I swear.
I swear.
Okay, and could you say your name and spell your last name?
First name Z H I.
How do you spell that?
First name Z H I, Z, last name Wei, W E I, twenty-one East King K Drive, Princeton Junction. Very incremental. I mean, for example, the, I don't know if this land is utilized. So that's why I feel, uh, that also echo my comment I made at the very beginning. When our town make a planning, should, should you guys, I mean, take a whole consideration, what kind of store or how to utilize land together to prioritize what kind of business we should encourage or not discourage? So let's come out, I want to make, I really don't see much benefit, actually. I mean, can, can generated from this kind of a convenience store. I would not say this is not good, I'm live nearby. Good to see another one generated by see the benefit compared to them is potential, I mean, downside, like the pollution traffic to the town. So, uh, yeah, so that's my comment I want to make. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there anyone else that would like to get the next hearing, the cross-examine, bring witnesses, we've got. Public will have another chance to speak after they hear and. So.
Sam. When will this be carried to? I want to announce it for the record.
So the next meeting would be February seventh.
I'm sorry.
February seventh, you grant an M O two extension to February seventh?
Oh. Can I ask him a, a quick question, um, just regards the brick? Um, with the brick being like, it gets monotone from C V S to to this. Do you have any facades that might have some, some stuck up? Just all of this brick? Some little different.
Go together, yeah. Just. Yeah.
Well, I will be, probably won't be.
The only thing I would not recommend would be stucco. Uh, so if you're looking for some sort of base material, maybe a stone. No, E I F S. Yes, you got it, right.
I am not going to be here next Wednesday. Which is, which is what the.